Just want to shout out the jazz band. They're still back there. Can we just give them a round of applause? I was over here snapping my fingers to it. Wasn't sure what I was doing, but it was good. It was working. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It is currently 5:00 PM on Monday, February 27, 2023. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, myself. We have interim Superintendent Dr. Marcy Larson, executive staff, and members of the school district staff, as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And so, anyway, yeah, so I was pretty happy with where that ended up. I don't know if you guys had any questions or you wanted to add anything, Chuck?
I would just say we do have Dan on Zoom also, who did a lot of the legwork. I know him worked with you and with Chuck on the contract, and he's prepared to speak to it as well.
Dan, would you be willing to share a little bit about the process that you went through with the development of that?
Yeah, sorry, I was having a little audio difficulty. I'm going to come back up at the other point, yes, but yes, for the contract, we, you know, the main thing we tried to do in the district with all of our wages is to have competitive wage. So we looked at neighboring districts. We looked at seven different school districts in the area, some a little larger, some a little smaller, and came up with a compensation package that fits both with our district size and the fact that we're bringing in a very experienced superintendent. So, you know, if you look to comparatively, you'd find that we're, you know, we're a little Snohomish, sort of larger districts like Lake Stevens, but a little above Arlington-Stanwood, same, you know, in county, but but a little bit smaller. And then we also looked at some of the standard language, of course, put some things in in the district as far as our contract to protect the district. It is a three-year contract, but there is some language that's pretty standard. Let me see if I can. Can you hear me better now? Yeah, a little better. Okay. Pretty standard in our region. The seven districts I looked at, six of them had language that allow if the if the contract is to be canceled for one reason or another, you know, Monroe's experienced that. There's a 12-month payout that protects the district from being beholden to all three years. And that's fairly standard in the region. There was one of the seven districts that I looked at that didn't have any protection for the district, which would have left that district with the full scope of the contract. So those are the main points in the contract. There are some language about, you know, evaluations happen every couple of years, goal setting with the board, also things that are pretty standard in superintendent contracts. Do you have any questions for me?
Chuck and I had time to have lots of questions with you, so I don't know, Jen or Molly, do you guys have questions?
So I think my question would be just kind of walk us through, going back, looking at 2019, when we had Frederica Smith's contract, it was six months of severance. And then when we had Justin Blasco's contract, it became 12 months of severance. So is, but you're saying that that is more of the norm now for this region, and it's no longer kind of six months. I just want to understand how we fully came to that number.
Yeah, I think what's happened in the region is being a superintendent of the school district, especially since COVID hit, has become a really difficult job. We've got 17 superintendents in our state right now that have been under duress and either resigning or, you know, losing their positions or things of that nature. And so as a superintendent, there's some security needed. So when you talk to WASA, which advises superintendents, they're recommending to superintendents that they try to push towards 18 months or to push towards not having that language in there at all, because essentially it kind of nullifies the value of the three-year contract. And the superintendent is a very public job, and there's some risks involved with taking that. So I didn't find any districts at all that had less than 12 months. So 12 months is the minimum that anyone had. The district that didn't have anything at all, 12 months is what protects the district without having any language at all, then it's a three-year contract. So if you were to cancel it, however, there is language in there, and this is also common to the region that if, you know, I really, after getting to know Sean and thoroughly vetting him through the interview process and looking at his references and his track record, I do not believe this will ever matter, but if there was a situation where there was a termination for cause, that payout wouldn't necessarily be automatic. That would be negotiated based on the reason. For cause is a threshold that, you know, someone has to violate some laws or some serious board policies. We did not have that in there before, so the district's a little more protected than it is now. But again, after going through the process with Sean and the vetting that we did and the many years of experience he has as superintendent, I don't think that's, I would be very surprised if that was ever necessary.
Also, just for other people who weren't privy to kind of how you came up with the number of 273,000, can you just kind of walk us through that and the thought process was behind that?
Sure. I looked at it from two ways, and I shouldn't say I, because Jeremiah and Chuck, we worked on this together, and I was working into their direction, but two ways. One, like I said, competitive wage, and that's kind of the way we look at every wage in the district. We want to be competitive, because one, we don't want people using Monroe as a stepping stone. We want them to want to stay. And we also believe that's a fair way to arrive at a salary. So it very much is just, you know, slightly above, and it's a total compensation package, but it's slightly above districts like Arlington and Stanwood, because we've got 600 or 700 more students than they do. It's a bit below Snohomish, Lake Stevens, our neighbors. Lake Stevens is a little larger than us. Snohomish is quite a bit larger than us. So it falls in there. The other way I looked at it is our former superintendent, his contract, his last contract was actually the 21-22 school year, but he had in there a an agreement to basically get the same increase that our principals and our building level administrators got, which was just a cost of living raise. It was figured by the IPD. So basically figuring IPD that year, and then this would have been another year, which most likely IPD, it comes really close to that 273 as well. So we were pretty close to where we should have been as far as competitive wage. And so by adding the IPD to it and looking at it by comps, it came right within a couple thousand of each other, right in that ballpark of 273.
Thank you, Dan, for answering those questions.
Sure.
The other thing that I was noticing, just in kind of going back and comparing contracts, just looking at what's different, I noticed that there's only 217 days in this one, and there previously was 218 days in Justin's and 223 in Frederica's. So what happened or what changed to cause the number of days to be different?
So a couple of things. One, the reason it went from 218 to 217 is because we now honor Juneteenth, which is wonderful that the state has taken that step, and the district along with it, it's required by law. So there's one more holiday reflected that went from 218 to 217. Basically, what that is, it's 260, which is a standard work year. There's 30 days of vacation that is also standard in the administrators in Monroe School District, and then and then you have the, what is now the 13 holidays. So the 260 minus the 30 vacation, and then minus the 13 gets us to the 217. And Molly, I did not look back at Frederica, but I'm going to assume that the most likely explanation for that, that at that time it was 25 vacation days, and that was pretty standard in the region for administration, the move from 25 to 30, and 30 is more common now.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't have questions as much as I just have a couple of comments. Thank you so much, Chuck and Jeremiah, and Dan, for spending so many hours negotiating, having those conversations, and doing that research for us. And really excited to see, especially the community involvement piece. I think it's going to be important for a superintendent to be active in civic and business operations in our community. I am also excited to see that he will be relocating to this area in Monroe. So that way we have a present superintendent in the community and out and about meeting our amazing family. Yeah. Any other questions? Anything else to add? Be ready for a vote? Okay, so the motion right now is that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the superintendent employment agreement. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4-0. Welcome, Sean, to Monroe.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure if you can hear me or not. Yes. First, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity, and I know anytime that you hire somebody, it is a leap of faith at times, right? Because interviews are just interviews. I will tell you that I will not let you down, board members, and the students and the staff and the community members. And just like you were interviewing me when I was there for that full-day process, I feel like I'm interviewing people as well, right? And trying to figure out if I'm the right fit, and how do I feel about the energy around improvement and pride of the district and all those kinds of things? I will say it was a long day, but I thoroughly enjoyed every bit of interacting with the various groups and cannot wait to roll my sleeves up and just get to work with everybody. I'm relieved it's 4-0, because our house is up for sale in Spokane. So my wife will be thrilled when I call her tonight before my board meeting here. And I can't tell you how excited both Michelle, my wife, is and our entire family, finally moving back to the west side of the Cascades, and just cannot wait till July 1st. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sean. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 2.02. It's for consideration of Everdriven Technologies Agreement. Is there a motion?
I've moved that Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Everdriven Technologies Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Everdriven Technologies Agreement discussion.
So I had some questions about this one. And I am aware that, especially, and it even mentioned like the McKinney-Vento Act and things like that, we're having extra transportation and needing to be able to access that. My question is, are we adding a new contributor to that? Mike is here. Yes. Thank you, Mike. Can you fill us in on why we're entering into a contract with this specific company and what that does for us?
So Everdriven formerly, they used to be ALC, American Logistics, and we had a contract with them, I'll say before I came, and then and then their contract expired, I think, a week ago. And so we're just entering, then we've been working with Hop Skip Drive. They're another, you know, care driver type of outfit, and we weren't working with ALC, because post-COVID, they lost a lot of drivers. They just couldn't fulfill our needs for contracted services. So we went with Hop Skip Drive, helped them develop in this area, and right now we just want another option. If we can't get a driver with Hop Skip Drive, so Everdriven now, they're starting to build their resources in this area again, and their pricing is actually a little bit better, too. So right now, we're currently contracting out 25 rides, is what they call them, between McKinney-Vento and just out-of-district transportation that we can't fulfill with the resources that we have right now. So that's, it's just to have another option. We're not obligated to use them in any way. It's just setting that contract in place.
So as I understand it, basically, we're working with a prior contractor with, under a new name, and with still competitive prices, and it just amplifies our options that we have when we need.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And thank you for all you do, Mike. Okay. Any other questions? All right. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4-0. Okay, moving on to agenda item 3.01, student representatives.
Go ahead, Laura. Okay, so there's a lot going on at Sky Valley right now. So on Friday, our course survey closed. And so at Sky Valley, we do our classes that we choose for the next year. We start it in February, I guess, and then so anybody can recommend a class that they want their teacher to teach, and then that just goes out on a survey, and then if it gets a certain amount of votes, and they do it the next, then they do teach it the next year. Right? Okay. So that just closed on Friday, and a few of the classes that were on the survey were Intro to Trades, Woodworking Community Service, Escape Rooms and Puzzles, and Archery, which were just, those were the ones that I thought were really cool. Also, piano is the number, a piano class is the number one voter for the past 26 years, and it was number one again this year. So more parent-led clubs and groups are being established all the time, and the most recent one is a Strings Club, and they meet every Wednesday at 9:00 AM. So any Sky Valley parents and students can start new clubs and go to them whenever they want. So that's pretty cool. And then the Academy of Critical Thinking Program will be taking a field trip to the state Capitol net, on the 10th, yes, next Friday, right? Yeah. And they will be getting a tour of the Capitol. They get to participate in a mock trial, meet with our local representatives, and visit the Legislative Chamber. So that will be really fun. And then tomorrow is Bring a Parent to School Day, and there will be a kindness concert, rock painting, and a barbecue lunch for all, and there's no classes.
I've thought about it. I haven't a chance, we've got a lot of cool stuff going on. I was not able to attend the Student Advisory Council meeting today, but this is worth it, it's kind of enough to send me the notes. The reason I was not able to attend is because track started today, which I'm super excited about. We're looking to have a phenomenal season this year, and I've got a lot of personal goals that I'm trying to achieve, and I'm hoping that we can help build unity on the team and just inspire people to do their best and keep encouraging others, have a good atmosphere, which we've had in the past, and I think we can have that again. So I'm super pumped. And additionally, we've got a whole bunch of other swing sports going around the campus. We've got boys soccer, girls tennis, golf, a couple others, oh, baseball and softball. Yeah, so tons of awesome stuff going on. Lots of people working hard, which is super cool. Additionally, we had a change to our flex schedule for today. We're not going to have flex on Mondays. What's going to be on our homerooms now, which is interesting. And then we have an incoming ninth graders night, Future Bearcat, I understand, this Wednesday. I got to go to that and also to the people, so I'm pretty excited to perform there, and we're going to have lots of good stuff to show our incoming ninth graders how awesome MHS is, because it's a cool place, and also get them involved in lots of clubs and stuff, which is exactly what we want to do. And we've worked on that. Additionally, we have robotics competition this week for the robotics club. First one of the season, which is going to be really cool. I get help with the statistics for that, so I'm really excited. Just like interviewing other teams and stuff, and then counting like points of how many different teams score, so we can rank them when it comes to choosing teams for other teams to be on our alliance, which is complicated, but really cool. We've got 3v3 teams, 3v3 alliances. When we go forward, yes, there's a lot of technical words. Basically, first robotics is like the coolest STEM thing, actually. But one of the best internship kind of hands-on programs there is for STEM, especially in robotics and engineering stuff, and electronics and everything related to that. There's 3v3 alliances that go up against each other and try to score cones and cubes and stuff like that. And there's a different competition every single year, as was this this year, and we built a robot that can do those things. It actually works really well. And we're excited to go compete, and it's going to be a great season. I don't know why I went on a tangent, but it's cool. Additionally, Black Student Union is open house nights, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They've got, they're showing movies at the Theater for Black History Month, which we've talked about before, which is super cool. Future Bearcat Night, talk about that. Key Club is doing a fundraiser/bake sale at Future Bearcat Night, which is going to be awesome. Bake sale, that's cool. And additionally, High Q, Decca, Knowledgeable, all have upcoming competitions. They're going to do great. They have a lot of cool kids in those. Asian Pacific Islander Student Group is going to be meeting next week to plan for their month, which is May, which is super awesome. And then Race and Equity Committee is going to be planning for the March 15th Assembly. I hadn't heard about that before, but it's going to be cool. And then we've got choir festivals and a band festival coming up, as well as a band trip to Disneyland, which I've been working hard for. And last but not least, Tolo Dance is March 17. It's a lot of stuff.
It's a lot of stuff. There's a lot going on at the high school.
Not to mention if you classes and homework and stuff, that's good stuff.
So what classes did you vote for, Laura? Which ones were your favorites? You don't have to name all of them, but.
I didn't do the survey. My mom did.
Well, what one did your mom vote for?
Yeah. Probably.
Piano?
Yeah. Oh, Academy of Critical Thinking, of course.
Awesome. You've got your mom blushing right now. Nathan, what are you running a track? Like, what's your event?
I'm a long-distance runner. I'm actually the long-distance captain this year, one and two. So I'm going to be focusing on the mile and the two mile, and I'll dabble in the 800 and 400 a little. And I'm looking, I'm looking to get my times down as well as I can, with specific time goals to come. And I'm just going to work as hard as I can and try to help other people on that.
How fast is your mile?
My mile is 4:45.
It's a lot faster than my mile. I think a lot faster than anybody's mile in here.
Thank you.
It's pretty awesome, dude. I have, I just want to clarify also, especially since it's a public meeting, when you're talking about the robotics competition, this is not BattleBots, because that's what goes in my head, because my eighth grader son, this is exactly what he's going to be thinking.
No, it is just as cool, if not cooler than BattleBots, because there's teamwork involved. But yeah, this is cool. Lots of high-tech stuff that they do, so.
Awesome.
Oh, and one more thing, I got into college, so that's.
Where'd you get in?
I'm getting to BYU.
Come on, everybody, just give me a hand. Hey, just so you know, before you, like, you do all that, you still got to get through sports and, you know, the rest of the semester and AP tests.
I'm not getting seniorized.
I know. You wouldn't. You wouldn't, because that's just you. I'm really proud of you, though. Good job. I think you guys are working hard. That's awesome. Thanks for keeping us up to date with a lot going on, both schools, at Sky Valley and at the high school. That's awesome. Appreciate you guys.
Are you going to Tolo?
Probably not.
Laura. Or you can take Laura. Just kidding. Just kidding.
Keep it to business, Jen. Come on.
Just kidding, Laura's mom. Okay. Again, now she's really blushing. Sorry. Okay, well, thank you both so much for that report. That was awesome. So many good things happening in all of our schools, and that's so fun to hear. And 4:44, that is amazing. That's, mine is around 20 minutes, so good job. Okay, let's get me out of this one, huh? Let's go to agenda item 3.02, audience comments. Okay. So I'm going to read what I normally read. I will say that I am in process of reworking some of what I say for the opening statement for our audience comments. This is something that we inherited, and so still kind of cleaning up and our systems and processes when it comes to our board meetings. And I just want to, moving forward, clarify kind of the norms and what we expect in our boardroom when we are running a meeting. So just to let you all know, I'm going to communicate that right now, and then moving forward, we'll go ahead and present something that is more consistent of the Monroe that we want to all see for our students. Okay. We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. Tonight, we will be utilizing a timer to assist in tracking each speaker's time, and I believe that's on our screen. There will be a sound that chimes when you have 30 seconds remaining in your three-minute time limit, and then another sound that will chime when your time is up. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please email any staff member, and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, any staff member can help with how to go forward if they complain about personnel. And we have about six speakers. Our first one is online. And let me go ahead and also apologize, because a couple weeks ago, we had an online audience comment. There's some confusion around it, and I ended up reading what they noted or something that they wanted to cover during their audience comment, and they didn't have the chance to speak on. or something that they wanted to cover during their audience comment, and they didn't have the chance to speak online. So I just want to acknowledge that that happened, and moving forward, we're also going to be cleaning up that process so that it is clear and everyone is on the same page.
And I also want to note, I did call and follow up. I didn't hear back, but offered our apology.
Thank you, Marcy. Okay, so our first person is speaking for a group, and it's Melanie. Hey, Melanie. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, awesome. All right, just your name and your relationship to the school district.
Yes, I am speaking on behalf from group. My name is Melanie Ryan. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm the parent of two Monroe School District alumni and the president of the Monroe Community Mo- Monroe Equity Community. I apologize, I don't feel good tonight, so we'll see. We'll see if I make sense. I wanted to kick off tonight sharing some great news that the last week Monroe Equity Council announced our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three grant recipients in the total amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars. And they are as follows. Park Place Middle School, two thousand dollars awarded to fund the start of a mariachi club for PPMS students. We're super excited about this and can't wait to see them. Sky Valley Education Center, a thousand dollars awarded for a Indigenous Studies Earth Day program they're going to do this year. Twenty-five hundred dollars awarded to Monroe High School for their Student Leaders Program to fund the ongoing work with educator Christian Page. And four hundred dollars awarded to Multby Elementary for staff development on culturally and historically responsive literacy. So we're deeply, deeply grateful to the Monroe Public Schools Foundation for their assistance in managing this program. The grant opportunity was open to all district staff and students and was evaluated on their ability to achieve one of the three outcomes or both, or any combination. The first one was equitable student success, which were programs and initiatives that identify and disrupt inequities in the education system that lead to disparate outcomes. The second was teaching and learning excellence, training programs and initiatives that build capacity for intercultural competence, anti-bias and anti-racist pedagogy, and skills for preventing and handling bullying, harassment, and intimidation in the classroom. And the third was inclusive MSD life and culture programs and initiatives that create positive classroom building and district environments that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We're also really grateful to all the building administrators who promoted this and signed off on the grants that were submitted. Unfortunately, we weren't able to fund all the grant requests, so we look forward to growing this program and continuing to partner with the district. Meeting the needs of students and staff, we do once again encourage this board to alleviate that burden on the community investment and invest more heavily in developing the culture and meeting the district's stated commitment to equitable access for all students. Both the financial and human resources allocated towards any sincere commitment to improving the culture do remain frustratingly absent. You know, again, I'd like to reiterate the request for an equity director and continuing to invest more in the professional development for staff that will carry on to what happens in our classroom and our buildings. Changing topics, at the last board meeting, we were here to discuss the ethical violations of Director Barnes. While those continue to remain unaddressed, we are still expecting that in the interest of repairing harm and building trust, Director Barnes and the rest of the school board will address her violation of that executive session and the intent of it, therefore, or thereof. Refusing to do so only continues to add to the strife and to the bad faith in our relationship and the relationship with the community. So we just want to reiterate that, that we still believe that's on the table to heal and repair. It was during that meeting when Director Whitfield reacted disrespectfully towards MEA President Robin Hayashi during her public comment. At the end of that meeting, Director Whitfield acknowledged he should not make faces when someone is speaking, but he then followed that up with, I will not apologize for it. When it was my turn to speak last week, I shared my anger at Directors Whitfield's actions. And when Mac followed up in sending our public comment and email, we reiterated the problem with this behavior. We pointed out as bad as this behavior was, and it had the elements of misogyny and racism, given who it was directed towards. And the history with that woman that had been targeted with misogyny and racism from our former superintendent, which had been substantiated and documented by a third-party investigator. I did ask Director Whitfield to apologize to Ms. Hayashi. As of this weekend, I believe as of this morning, that still has not happened. You are aware that Director Whitfield responded that he would no longer read emails from myself or Mac. I do want to say that subsequently, there was an email exchange between Director Whitfield and myself. From Director Whitfield, he said, I'm working on developing healthy ways to observe my boundaries and master my composure when I have big feelings, and I apologize for my hasty reaction. And my response to that was humaning isn't for the faint of heart. Humaning in public in a position of power is one of the most vulnerable things we can do. And I love what Brene Brown says about vulnerability. Vulnerability is not about winning or losing, it's having the courage to show up even when you can't control the outcome. And I'm still, I'm still talking to Chuck here. In my response, when I responded, you don't say whether you are sticking with your statement to no longer read my or Mac's emails. I offer that our conversations from Mac's perspective are not about winning or losing for either one of us. They are about holding ourselves as leaders who hold power to our highest callings and the highest standards to serve all of the people in our community, to whom much has been given, much will be required. And I continue to say in this email, we are going to continue to have these conversations. We're going to continue to explore power, accountability, reparation and restoration within ourselves as a mech board and with leaders in the community. We hope you will have the courage to show up with us. I extend that message to the full board, and I will leave it there tonight, and I'll invite you all to consider what we invited our community consider when we shared this exchange. Intent versus impact. Intent centers the person who did the harm. Impact centers the person who was harmed. If I accidentally crash into your car, your car is still damaged. I'd like to also share a quote by Adam Grant. Strong emotions can help to explain behavior, but they don't excuse misbehavior. You can't always control how you feel. You do get to decide whether, when, and how you express it. And the final thing we asked our community to consider for all of us, excuse me, is the best apology is changed behavior. There is a reason we continue to show up in these meetings, because we're still waiting for this board's changed behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I have Heather?
I will be brief this morning, this evening. I just wanted to thank you and acknowledge that my request last week was that you think about doing things a little bit differently, being more transparent, having more conversations out front so that we can all follow along and understand the reasons and why we do the things we do. And so as a contracts person, I appreciated the changes that had been made to the superintendent contract so that if we found ourselves in a position where there needed to be a replacement of the superintendent that we didn't wind up in the same situation we're in this last time. So I, I see change, I see improvement, I see learning and growth. And then the way that you all handled the, the superintendent contract and the discussions that were had and the level of transparency so that the community can understand what's being done, why it's being done, what the considerations were. I just thought that was excellent, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Can I please have Derek come up? And Derek, you're speaking on behalf of a group. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, awesome. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Sure. Hi, my name is Derek Wazinski, and I have a child in Hidden River Middle School. I'm also an active volunteer in formerly the Multby Elementary PTO, now the Hidden River PTO. I'm a volunteer for Scouts and elsewhere in organizations in Monroe like Passato's Animal Sanctuary. I often, I actually also serve on Monroe School District Budget Task Force. So that's me. Over the next few weeks, you'll undoubtedly see me in many doorways in Monroe with my kiddo, selling Girl Scout cookies. That's something that I have managed to do for our troop for the past four years running that. Now, when I'm not selling cookies and when I'm not dealing with my kid, I am a business person. I have been a business person in management and sales for large companies for over thirty years, at very big companies, multi-billion dollar companies. My job has been giving and hearing sales pitches, and I know when a winning pitch is good, and I know when you're being conned. And I can tell you that when people come to us in Monroe and talk about values, they're trying to con us. Now, I want to clarify what I mean about values. I mean the moral or ethical principles in which people live by to guide their behavior. This usually includes things like honesty, fairness, and respect. Now, I think all of us here, regardless of our own political stripe or ilk, can agree that honesty, fairness, and respect are three Monroe values. I think we can agree on that, that we should be honest, we should be fair, and we should be respectful to each other. I don't think we can disagree with those values. Let's put a pin in those values for a second. But here in this meeting and in other meetings across the country, we're hearing the term values, and we're hearing something divisive, and it's intended to be. Because many of the people that are talking about values over and over again, as in she holds our values or he holds our values, they're using it as a strategy to imply something. And that something is that there is a right way and a wrong way to live. And the way they live is right, and the way you live is wrong. That's what's implied. Now, this is an old strategy. In debates about social issues all the way, you know, since two cavemen were arguing about bows and arrows and whether they should have them or not, people will talk about their values rather engaging in a real discussion about the impacts of issues on people in our communities. Because it's easier. You see, it's easier to separate into camps and to focus on values and ignore the meaningful discussions about issues that affect our children's future. It's easier to say pronouns are against my values. Instead of understanding that sixty-three percent of LGBTQ plus students, high schoolers in this country, say that they feel sad or hopeless by simply watching the nightly news compared to twenty-three percent of their cisgendered fellow students. It's easier to say they're grooming our kids to be gay, queer, trans, whatever, while ignoring that twenty-three percent of LGBTQ plus high schoolers in this country have attempted suicide compared to five percent of their cisgendered co-students. It's easier to say we have to worry about leftists or socialists or communists taking over in Monroe than talking about the leadership in this community. Legacy leadership on this board, administration, and this current board has given us a student body that meets thirty-three percent of ELA math requirements and thirty-eight percent of ELA science standards. Twenty points less than the state average. Like to hear some anger about that tonight. I'm an employer. I hire people for a living, and I'm gonna tell you something no one else is gonna be brave enough to tell you. Thirty-three percent on a science score, you do not get a job of the future, because I am not hiring you. That's a reality. That's what our students, that's what our children are facing. So what are we gonna talk about? Are we gonna talk about these things? Are we gonna talk about CRT or grooming or litter boxes or the Stay Puft Marshmallow Man or whatever the else people want to talk about? Let's talk about those values again, those shared values, right? Honesty, fairness, and respect. Three things we, you know, I didn't see anybody disagree that those aren't Monroe values. Is it honest to say we have to stop anti-American teaching going on in our schools? Is that an honest statement? Because that's where what groups like Moms for Liberty say. Down the street in another school district from where I live, there's a little school called Ruby Bridges. Does everybody know who Ruby Bridges is? In nineteen sixty, she stood in front of a school as a child with four US Marshals. Norman Rockwell like painted a picture about it and everything. Tennessee. Moms for Liberty got together, and they decided that the Ruby Bridges autobiography should be banned in their school district. Why? What was the crime? The crime was there was a picture in that book that showed images of white people holding pro segregation signs. That was too rough for the kids in Tennessee, the white kids in Tennessee to see. Ruby Bridges, un-American. Is that honest? How about fairness? Is it fair to say we're just protecting our kids from the woke left mob? Is that a fair statement? I've heard that all over this community. You know, Moms for Liberty says that a lot. They said it a lot in Iowa, where they're working on Senate Bill eleven seventy-five, broaden censorship and require school employees to report on what their kids say in lunch lines and in locker rooms. Because the language of that bill is vague for a reason. It says, when kids express a gender identity, it is time for the school district to report it to parents. Now, express the gendered identity, it isn't Billy going to the counselor and saying, hey, I feel like Sally. It's two kids talking in a lunch line, saying, maybe I like this person, maybe I don't. You're going to go ahead and let the cafeteria worker, who's gonna be under threat in Tennessee for a five thousand dollar fine, they have to report it. They have to be faced with, am I gonna report what this kid says or not? Is it, is your child gonna go to a counselor and say, you know what, I'm feeling funny. I'm twelve years old. I'm in Park Place Middle School. I'm feeling funny about my life and about the things that are going on in my body. I wanna talk to my counselor. And then your counselor's gonna pick up the phone and talk to somebody, and then just say, hey, you know what? No semblance of, no semblance of privacy, no semblance of anything else. We're gonna report this. Is that respectful? Or excuse me, is that fair to those students? That they get fired as a cafeteria worker because they don't want to report that two kids in the lunch line at Monroe High School were talking about dating in twenty twenty-three? Now, let's talk about respectful. We need to keep left-wingers or communists or socialists off the school board. And I'm gonna let you in on something here. I was in US Army Intelligence at the end of the Cold War. I held a top-secret code word clearance, and I was cleared for SCI, which means secured compartmentalized information. My only job was fighting living, breathing communists. I was a codebreaker who was tasked with breaking Soviet and Warsaw Pact nations, their command and control encryption codes. Command and control is military code for nuclear. That's what I did for a living. I can tell you, before I moved here in twenty sixteen, I checked, there's no communists in Monroe. I got a, I got a note on my secret decoder ring from the Illuminati that says it was safe. I would love to tell you that it's silly that we're talking about socialists and leftists and communists taking over Alfie's Pizza Monroe. But this is a lot of what people want to talk about, so let's dig in. When someone starts dropping some of those things in front of you, communist, socialist, leftist, it's an attempt to dehumanize the person they're talking to, and it's also telling you they don't know what they're talking about. Because they don't want to talk about how we can try to figure out how to help our LGBTQ plus students live their best lives and excel academically and socially. They don't want to have discussions about how we can teach students to critically think about our nation's history instead of just eating what's fed at them at face value. We're not having conversations of why, why Common Core is important, and although it's hard for adults like me over fifty to understand why we're teaching math that way, it helps students when they get into algebra, calculus, physics, the jobs of the future. How do we prepare our children for the world that as it is, not how it used to be when we were growing up? Is it respectful? Any of those questions to answer, sounds like communism to me. Sounds like socialism. Another lefty talking. These are hard questions. And there's a lot of people coming up here today that don't want any of them. They don't want to answer them. They don't want to talk about them. They'd rather talk about, you know, fighting inclusivity in schools. They'd want to offer bounties for people who turn in teachers to discuss divisive topics. Now, don't take my word for it. Google Moms for Liberty, look it up yourself. Listen, I gave you my bona fides about being a communist hunter and a totalitarian hunter, but I have to say that my spidey sense is tingling a little bit after reading that list. I'm not going to call Moms for Liberty communists, but I will say they have a political agenda. I'm 53 years old and every day I wake up in a world that's different. The stuff I learned as a kid doesn't apply anymore. A lot of my K through 12 schooling, I was taught the story of America, our myths and our legends. It's not the case. The world my educators and sadly my parents showed me was not the world as it was. It's that the world as they wanted it to be. I grew up and I went out to basic training with men and women that didn't look like me and I learned their lives weren't all wedding cake. I saw the bravest soldier I ever knew dishonorably discharged because he liked kissing guys instead of girls. I went to a training facility in Arkansas in 1990 and I was told that I could not hang out with my black soldier friend at a bar in town because of the locals. I don't want to live in that locale. I don't want to live in a town that's looked at like that. Listen. To me, when you hear the word value, you're being conned and you have to ask your question, why? When everyone stopped talking tonight, I want to ask yourself honesty, fairness, and respect. Who's living up to that and who isn't? And to any Monroe high schoolers, seniors that are listening right now, my advice to use to register to vote and vote like your life depends on it. Because in these next couple of years, it will. That's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. Janine?
Hi.
Hey. Okay, your name and your relationship to the district. And it looks like you're speaking for a group.
A group, but it'll probably only take three minutes. That's all right. I'm Janine Burkhart. I've been in the school district for over 35 years and raised a couple of kids and they're already regular adults and that sort of thing. Concerned adult, that's who I am today. Anyway, I just wanted to say I appreciate your allowing us the ability to address you guys, the school board directors. You do not have to allow public comment during school board meetings, which I, as much as I love being able to speak and have others speak, if civility and courtesy cannot be maintained, please feel free to remove this avenue from the public, either for a time or permanently. And that was my first point. The second point, I have three points. Second point is I am aggrieved, bothered, and ashamed that so many have stepped up to badmouth any one of you, to accuse and yell and demand their way, have all been such divisive and unproductive statements, in my opinion, where are the innovative solutions, collaborations, helpful suggestions that build upon our children's education? Sometimes division is just division with no valid arguments. And then the third point is I just wanted to thank you guys. You for the tireless, attentive, open, and transparent hard work each of you have done on this board for our children's education. Thank you for being public servants. Bless you for being polite, courteous, and professional in all these meetings despite the courtesy not always extended to you. There's much to be accomplished and I encourage you to stand strong on your consciences and your convictions and your collaboration with the citizens of Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Melanie?
Good evening. I'm Melanie Lockhart and I'm a mother of three with two currently attending a Monroe Elementary School. Here we are again, back to speak on more of the same because certain individuals on this board seem hell-bent on not taking accountability for their actions despite them going against the duties of their elected positions. Director Barnes, last board meeting, all you had to say for your decision to solicit private special feedback from your like-minded friends from within a closed executive session was, "Thank you for coming." You spoke briefly of learning and growing. Learning and growing from what exactly? And how are you learning and growing? Because you haven't acknowledged what you did publicly. You haven't publicly apologized and you haven't stood by your actions either. I understand you mentioned in one-on-one conversation that you had lost weight and hadn't slept after news broke about what you did, but you've said nothing to the public. You're elected to serve. Does that mean you felt shame for what you did even though the district wants to insist you did nothing wrong? Or does it mean you were sick to your stomach because you were caught and called out? If you can't take personal accountability, you have no business being on this board. I stand by my previous words. Trust in this board has been squashed all over again. And there's no path forward to rebuilding that trust with Director Barnes on this board unless accountability is taken. Unfortunately, Director Barnes isn't the only board member who caters to some voices over others. Director Whitfield, I know you have a history of being called out during board meetings for your words and actions and I get it, it's not always fun. But it's the public's right to hold its elected officials accountable. And as an elected board member, you serve us, not the other way around. That includes all the teachers and staff who work here. Last meeting wasn't the first time you've shaken your head at our teachers while they've come before this board to speak. Back in December 2021, when meetings were still virtual only, you turned off your camera altogether so the public wouldn't see your reactions. While this board listened to allegations brought against the one employee the board is directly responsible for. Then last year on January 24th, some teachers spoke about comments you made during the previous board meeting regarding the former superintendent being under fire. Those teachers spoke about not having faith in you being impartial during the investigation and you visibly shook your head at them then as well. I ended up shifting course in my own public comments that night and read some of your text message exchanges obtained being public, obtained via public records requests to further illustrate that their lack of faith wasn't without merit. And later that evening, you were reactionary in your comments. It seems you did something similar, being reactionary, following comments at the last meeting, informing the president of the Monroe Equity Community that you no longer read emails from her or the MECC board. That's called silencing voices, Director Whitfield, and it goes against everything this board is elected to stand for. Again, you serve us, all of us. As a reminder, the teachers that serve our children have voices worth hearing. They deserve a heck of a lot more respect than the board member shaking his head at them when they speak before you all, while his family sits among this very audience and audibly snickers and mocks the speakers they disagree with, like happened two weeks ago. It is our teachers who are the most direct line to the students this district serves. I'm almost done, promise. They of course have several layers around them to also support our kids, but our teachers have the most direct line. I'm sure you all have your own memories of the profound impact teachers had on you as a kid. That is who you have repeatedly chosen to shake your head at, Director Whitfield. If you can't show them respect and furthermore, if you can't apologize to them when your actions are clearly in the wrong, then you also have no business being on this board. I expect better from all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Brian?
Hello, Brian Coonan. 32 years, so many kids, two still in the class in school. I'm here to talk to you about the Regional Apprentice Program. I came here October, November of '21 to discuss that with you. Year is about over and I wanted to give you some feedback. Unfortunately. Here we go. Planning. You guys got an F. No planning was completed until two weeks before the school year started. I called repeatedly, my wife called repeatedly, no answers. Implementation. Sorry to say, because of the lack of planning, the implementation wasn't that good. There's two classes at the RAP program, a morning and an afternoon class. Unfortunately, nobody looked to see what the afternoon class was and that's where you put the students. The afternoon class was second-year students in the program and all seniors. Other planning, you guys, not you, sorry, I mean the school district, I'm sorry. Transportation. You guys, two weeks, two days before they started school, my son was called and asked if he'd be willing to travel up by himself up I-5 because they hadn't figured out the transportation plan. Leaders in learning, I love leaders in learning, please. This is not a knock, but because of the lack of planning, they didn't know what was going on. They had my son scheduled for a full day of classes. The high school also didn't know what was going on because they got a phone call. My son was trying to leave the school when he was standing out front waiting for the bus to come pick him up to go up to Marysville. Both students, you had to interview, put in applications, interviewed, and got in. My son dropped out because he was just getting behind already when he started the school year because they knew more. Last thing, I gotta say, I'm going to give you an F for support here. There's been nothing from the school district about the RAP program this year. You guys have had numerous college nights, financing nights, all those things for students going to college. The RAP program will help people become very good at trades that we desperately need in high-paying jobs. And yet, nothing in this school district about applying. And I don't think you will have anybody going up next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mindy?
Good evening. My name is Mindy Hawes. I'm a teacher here in Monroe and the Vice President of the Monroe Education Association. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the MEA Exec Board. After witnessing the outrageous behavior of Director Whitfield, I find myself reflecting on the Before School Courageous Conversations Training. It was unfortunate that both Director Whitfield and Barnes voted against this impactful training. More so, this training is vital to better our districts so all within our community feel safe. At the last school board meeting, people did not feel safe. They were not respected through the actions of Director Whitfield. On day one of the Courageous Conversations Training, we were asked to reflect on the Yoruba proverb. I want to get this right, so I'm going to say it slowly. "Where you will sit when you are old" shows where you stood in your youth. Looking back on those words and the attentions I set that day, that I would be open to learning, recognizing my weaknesses, privileges, and biases, and committed to creating a safe and welcoming learning environment for all, which recognizes our own unique histories and perspectives, I knew I had to speak up tonight. You see, when I'm old, I'm going to be someone who changed the community. I want my children to be proud of what I've done. Not to be seen as someone who is scared to recognize my own areas of weakness and growth, bias and privilege, but as someone who made the necessary changes to improve the community for all. This change does not, this change cannot just come from our students, the educators in our building, and our building administration. It's inclusive of the entire district. This includes you as the school board leaders. Director Whitfield, the last meeting is not the first time you've lost your stone face, to quote you. During a school board meeting, it was the first time a woman of color called you out for it. At the end of the meeting, you acknowledged your behavior and stated that you do not apologize for it. That's unacceptable. Would you apologize if a white man was standing in front of you? Additionally, there was an email shared last week on the Families of Monroe's Schools Facebook page where Director Whitfield responded to two members of the community that he no longer reads their emails. According to WASDA, an organization Director Whitfield quotes many times, standard one, values and ethical behavior. To be an effective school director, there are five benchmarks you should meet. Number one, place student needs first. You've shown time and time again that you are more concerned about your conservative Christian agenda than to meet the needs of all students. Number two, demonstrate commitment to equity and high standards of achievement for each student. How can you demonstrate a commitment to equity and high standards that you don't claim yourself accountable to? As an educator, I cannot demonstrate my commitment to anything without modeling it for my students first. Commitment to treating each individual with dignity and respect is number three. Your treatment of Robin and to the members that she represents was not respectful and you had the opportunity to apologize for your behavior. And instead, you doubled down on your, on your disrespect by saying, I quote, "I made a reaction. I shouldn't have. I'm not going to apologize for it," end quote. This is the definition of gaslighting. Not only were you disrespectful to Robin, you were disrespectful to the members of the community you claimed to serve refusing to read their emails. One of which led the Community Levy Committee that helped to pass the levy. A levy that many voters failed the first time because they did not trust district leadership. You should be emailing Melanie Lockhart daily to thank her for her efforts and dedication because without her countless volunteer hours and commitment, that levy would not have passed. Number four, model high ethical standards. Being unwilling to own your behavior isn't ethical. It's relying on your privilege and it's gaslighting. Number five, advocate for public education. Public education isn't about your political or religious beliefs. As a nonpartisan public servant, no one should know your religious or political beliefs. Yet we know through your actions and statement where your beliefs lie. As an educator, we complete the Danielson Evaluation Framework every year to show student and professional growth. Based on standard one of the WASDA, I would say you've earned a basic rating, Director Whitfield. I encourage you to take the time to self-reflect on the Yoruba proverb. Where you sit when you are old will show where you stood in your youth and decide what is your intention as a school board director and how you can change your behavior to earn a proficient score. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4.001. We have the CTE Month slash Celebration Report. Think, I just want to especially thank our students for hanging out and you get to process all the things, you know, this is what a board meeting looks like. And I just want to thank you all for being so professional and, and it's, and just behaving so beautifully and being such an example for all of us adults. You know, we're just trying to be like y'all. So thank you so much for, for doing that. And Shannon, I know you're going to take it away and bring all that energy for us.
Hi, thank you. My name is Shannon Tark. For those who don't know me, because I was not expecting such a crowd. And I am our District Director of College and Career Readiness, or CTE. And I want to, first of all, also thank students because we're going to recognize some of y'all and families for being patient as we get to this place. So, um, as I know our board knows, it is CTE Month. That means we celebrate all of our CTE programs and the student work and staff work that goes into them. So I just wanted to bring that to the table and also give my annual report and kind of where we're at with the program and go from there. So, um, yes, oh, click, I forgot. I knew I'd fidget if he gave me this too early, so. As you all know, I started in this position a year and a half ago, so my role was created at that point. And so we have been working really hard to come to kind of what is this program and where do we want it to go? We've had the classes, but my role was, was that oversight wasn't there. It was kind of parsed out between several different people. So when I was an assistant principal at the high school, I had a piece of it and all those different things. So in that time, that year and a half, to kind of give you an update, we have developed a program vision. So our goal is to provide all students with opportunities to engage in high-quality CTE pathways with strong vertical and programmatic alignment in order to prepare them for college and career readiness upon leaving high school, whatever that may be. We don't have a designation of like, college is the way to go, careers are the way to go, trades are the way to go, it's all. So I just want to kind of start with that. Oops, I keep hitting my, the wrong thing. So to start with a little bit of background, the CTE Quality Program Standards, the link that's in this slide, you'll see, how do I open the link from, sorry? So you'll see here that there are actually 16 So, you'll see here that there are actually 16 program standards that we have for our, our CTE programs, including everything from educator licensing to our safe practices, our lab classrooms, all those types of things. I'm not gonna talk through all 16 of them, but I did want to kind of highlight some of the work, you can go back to the other thing. Highlight some of the, show you what they are, first of all, and then highlight some of the work that we're doing in there. I'm not, you don't need to open the second one. I also included for people at their leisure when they're, you know, have a lot of free time to go through are, what the Perkins Comprehensive Program Review, if we were to be audited, what those standards are, you'll see that there's a lot of overlap between the two sets of standards, so. I wanted to show that that's, that's kind of what we're aiming to. When I talk about high-quality program, that's what we're trying to get to, we do have cleanup to do, and we recognize that and we're, we're moving forward with it, so. That being said. Who's doing all that work? Oops, I went too fast, I skipped a slide, don't look at that. Okay. Um, okay, so, I wanted to highlight criteria too, which this is curriculum instruction and evaluation. And what we're doing within this is, CTE has what's called a course framework, it is a pretty extensive document that includes all the standards, the assessments, and how they all link and cross over to our core curriculum, as well as the work-based learning opportunities, industrial or industry-recognized credentials, dual credit, and our leadership and employability skills. So, each class has its own separate framework, we have been going through and auditing, updating those to make sure that they reflect the standards of what's actually being taught in the class and create a program of study which is a whole program for a pathway of how you're going to proceed through classes to get to what your actual goals are. Oh, I hit it again, we, I can't be trusted with this clicker, I'm sorry. So, we're also doing a curriculum audit with new core curriculum for health. We purchased this last year and then, and we're rolling that out this year as well as we're getting supplemental curriculum in several of our other classes. Based on the fact that we just hadn't been doing, didn't have a replacement plan in place prior to this year. And we have common assessments happening through our professional learning community process. And Jennifer Murphy, our Director of Assessment and Curriculum, and I are working together to revise our IMC process to reflect what CTE needs are so that we, because in the past, we've had one plan and we wanted, and that kind of caused confusion, people are like, well, I got it approved through the locally, but my cab, but we have to get it approved through state, so. We want to make sure that we have that process cleaned up so that we stay in compliance. So who's doing all that work? Now we can look at this slide. This is our CTE staff, I want to call out, I'm not gonna call out all of their names, but they're amazing staff, I, I'm really blessed to work with probably the best program on the whole planet. And Nathan, I don't know where Nathan went, but I also want to thank him for like, really celebrating my program as well, so that first robotics happening at GP this weekend. If you want to check it out, it's pretty cool, you are welcome to attend, it's open to the public. And they are crazy events, so. We, we have an amazing staff who dedicate countless hours, both within their classroom and outside of the classroom. And, and they just work really, really hard to support our kids, so I want to make sure that I celebrate them. And next standard, before I jump into this, I also want to celebrate and I'm gonna ask them to join me, even though they're gonna not like me for it. Shannon Barksdale. Brenda Tranteria and Michelle Dickinson and Darby Vicas. So, yes, please, thank y'all. So, Michelle is our CTE Program Manager. Brenda is our Career Center Specialist. Shannon is our Program Departmental Manager and Darby is our TOSA. These ladies do amazing, amazing, amazing work, and they keep me sane, which is, and they keep other people sane around me, which is a whole lot of, a whole lot to do because I have a lot of energy, so. So they are amazing and they have really helped us, as we, we called it last year, just uncover rocks, so we, we uncovered a rock, we uncovered a rock, and they're helping us just really work to repair that, so. Without them, we could not be doing the job that we're doing. One of our big goals, and these guys have been a huge part of that I want to call out, is we've been trying really hard to do positive promotions this year, so you're seeing on social media, if you're tracking it, a lot of things about what our CTE students and programs are doing, and that is in large part thanks to these ladies. A lot of that program stuff I talked about in the last standard also, and thanks to these ladies. And what we're gonna get to at the end, which I'm super excited about, is our student celebrations, also in thanks to these ladies, so. This is our team and I'm super proud to work with them. So with the help of that team, we have developed a new annual program review process in which we had, we shared in the fall and our, during our Perkins and our end-of-year report, where they, our staff are actually looking at those standards that I showed you to begin with and coming back to them. So that helps us keep accountability, we're growing capacity with our staff to understand what our program needs to look like, and that's been a huge part of our lift. And then we're using that along with other student data and evidence to make good decisions around how we inform our program and what we do moving forward, which is reflected in our four-year planning that you will see again in the fall. And then, we also have advisory committees, which I'm gonna talk to a little bit more specifically in a, nope, in a second. And the, let's put that down there. The advisory process is really informative for us, we work with a lot of local businesses and they help inform what, us on what industry practices are. So we continue to have ongoing training, we published an advisory manual, so what that looks like and what the responsibilities are, if people are interested in doing that. And we've developed some promotional advertising to get more advisory members. And then for budget, budget's a big one for us, and Shannon Barksdale, this is really all her. But we have developed a new, we went through and recoded everything in our budget because it was all over the place and we had budgets that were, were out of date as far as what classes and programs we were offering. So we've revised that and we've created a lot of transparency with our, our staff and our other stakeholders. On the next slide. I have a link to our budget, I'm not gonna go into great detail there either, but you'll see that it reflects our staffing, it reflects our carryover, and it reflects our, our general, our funds are all come off of enrollment, so you'll see that it's all enrollment-based. And then we make decisions about how we use that money, I ask for every staff member to have a budget worksheet where they outline what their potential costs would be. And then we also have a budget reserved for things like curriculum and emergency type of equipment replacements, and then we do some long-term planning with that as well, so. That's all reflected in there as well as our grants that we apply for every year, and we have some rock star grant writers on our team as well, so. We've been doing pretty well with that. Including robotics. So. And then, next, facilities. They're not here, but I want to thank all of our facilities and maintenance people. Especially, I want to shout out Director Adam Denny, who is new this year, he is amazing. And I am so, so excited to work with him, so. I, I just took him like, we're gonna walk through another building, we're gonna go walk through another room. Because he is helping us take down barriers one after another, so I really want to thank him and his team. We're seeing incredible progress, progress happening at a really, really quick rate. So it's taking care of some things that have been ongoing frustrations for a while, so really thankful. And that, in that, we're, we're finding, you're going to see some of these coming through, that we are going to be making some additional furniture and computer equipment purchases with some of the carryover funds that we've just been allotted by the state. And then, we are also in the process of developing an inventory process, working with Adam so that we can track where all of our items are and create a replacement cycle for that. And we also need to increase storage greatly, especially at the high school, so we're working on that with them as well. And then. Advisory, as I said, where we work with our advisory team, we have three general advisory meetings and we also have three program advisory meetings every year. We will be having our first return to in-person spring meeting coming up this, next month, I believe. And at that point, we will actually be doing a facilities walkthrough and getting some information on what we need to focus on there. And we have spent some time going over just kind of that ongoing training and updates stuff I spoke to earlier. And we also have those program meetings for every, all of our six programs. We'll be taking that IMC process and replicating it for our GAC because it's really those people who should be identifying if our curriculum is appropriate there, so that's part of in development. And then we're also working with Deanne Hermes and her team and their Director of Digital Learning to bring in Instructional Technology Committee because that, that work informs our work, so it makes more sense to do this and streamline it so that we're all having the same conversations instead of isolated silo conversations, so. That is ongoing work that's happening there. And of course, I want to give a shout out to our GAC and program advisory members, so they're all listed up there for you, those are some of the local businesses that we work with. I especially want to call out, and I'm looking for her name, Bobby Linda Mueller, she, Linda Mueller from the Snohomish Conservation District, she's our GAC President and she has been, she has like, let me suck her, her back into the, into the role over and over and over again, but she's fabulous. And all of these folks are, and they, they give their time freely to support our program and our students, so. Thank you to them and leadership and employability, and I'm gonna start this one by passing the mic over to a few of our DECA students. If they want to come on up. While they're walking up here, leadership and employability includes our CTSOs, our Career and Tech Student Organizations. We have, as Nathan stole my thunder again, he spoke to you that we had several students, lots of things happening at the high school, so we are currently, we have DECA State this week. We have WCTSMA, which is our Health Science Sports Med Program. We've got FFA, we've got FCCLA, we have got Skills in Tech, and we have First Robotics, so. All of those programs are, we're in our season, our competition season right now, and we have kids just knocking it out of the park left, right and center as far as qualifiers, we have kids going to state and nationals in all of our programs, so. I wanted some of our, our DECA students to take an opportunity, and Darby Vicas is also our marketing and DECA advisor. So I wanted them to come up and just take a second to talk about their experiences in DECA.
Hello, I'm Sophie, this is currently my third year being in DECA and I'm currently also the President of DECA. To briefly share my experience so far, I've gotten the opportunity to travel to nationals last year and, which was to Atlanta, and I had a lot of fun, I made a lot of new friends, I met a lot of new people. And I just really got to explore different cities that I have never even been to, and that also includes Bellevue, and that was for like any FLC or any of our conferences that we attend, and that also includes state. And things that I, I guess, things that I've really benefited from, benefited from being part of DECA was the fact that it really built a lot of my life skills, so that includes things like public speaking. Just like learning to communicate with new people, getting comfortable talking to new people. Things like taking initiative, not just in classrooms, but also in clubs, different programs, even across the school. And also just learning to advocate for a lot of other voices, that's pretty much been my experience being part of DECA.
My name's Ailey and I've been in DECA this year and then last year, so. But last year, I was able to do area online where I was able to get first place in my writing competition, which I haven't been good at writing and working in competitions, but I was able to gain experience through that. And I placed first, which was really exciting for me, so I got to go to state. And I've been able to learn a lot about business and marketing and just how to work with other people and learn like how to speak in front of people because I'm pretty shy and I usually don't do that. So I've just learned a lot.
Thank you, guys. Amazing students, again, we have kids competing in, on every level, and they're learning all sorts of on-the-job skills that are, are going to be really a huge payoff for them later in life. And they get the experience, not just talking about it, but actually doing it, which is a very different, different thing. So, very excited and proud of those students, and we have a couple more students we're gonna talk about as well, so. So our CTSO organizations are up here, just so you can see them, I guess. So we want to start off with Bellamy, and I'm just gonna have each student kind of come up. So this year, as I said earlier, one of our biggest, biggest goals was that we wanted to positively promote all of our classes and our students, but we also wanted to call out every month, we wanted to identify students at middle and high school levels in CTE programs and what they were doing. And we asked our students to nominate them, and then we created kind of our own little system, certificates. I bought a bunch of mugs, I bought them personally, so no gift of public funds. And, and then we cricket them, well, not me, Shannon Barksdale again, because I'm not creative that way. But should we make one that has each school-specific logo on it and we give that to the student, so. I wanted to start, and you don't have to talk. Start with recognizing Boramie. Boramie actually was a voted Snow Isle Student of the Quarter, which is a pretty big deal when they have, I think it's 14 different schools that are feed into the program, so. She was nominated and won Fall Student Quarter of the Quarter Award. And she's, was chosen on her communication, attendance, integrity, honesty and character, so. Congratulations, we wanted to shout her out, and we have a few little, little goodies for her as well, and there, we asked families to be here tonight as well, so we are celebrating our students and their families, so. And next up, I'm not sure everybody made it, so we have Kristevi. I don't see or hear Kristevi, so Kristevi is a middle school student at Hidden River, and Kristevi is a part of our Digitals class. And a very engaged role model, she was mortified when we showed up to take her picture, so I'm not surprised. But do you want to honor her? Known for peer coaching her classmates and really taking care of others, and so, along with just diving into the content and learning, so. And next, we have Naomi. There's Naomi, I couldn't see, come on up, yes, I know. You don't have to say anything, just get a little, so Naomi demonstrates also from Digitals, but it, and also Hidden River, but comes from really having a growth set and collaborative. She takes everything with a positive attitude and is infectious and just really pleasant to be around, is what I understand from her teacher. So, thank you, Naomi. I told them they didn't have to talk. And then, our next student is Gerardo. And Gerardo is from Park Place, and Ms. Bannon says wonderful, wonderful things about him, he is interested in cooking, very serious about his craft and creates the most amazing and finished dishes. Oh, crepes and French toast, favorite dish. You can come to my house anytime. So, and according to her, she's making a lot of different, he makes a lot of different dishes that make everything stand out just a little bit more. And you may have enjoyed his work at the Great Potato Bake Field. So thank you, Gerardo. And then Emma Fields, I know I saw you back there somewhere, there you are. Emma Fields, and Emma got to be actually our very, very first student that we got to recognize, so it was very fun and special for us, she might not have cared, but we thought it was cool. And she's also from Park Place and was recognized for her work in her sewing class again by Ms. Bannon. And she like helped with their monster project, which to me didn't make any sense until I dove into this, because I don't know what we're talking about here, but. She is super creative, actually ended up creating about 15 different projects for their monster project as opposed to just the one that was required, so. We were super excited to surprise Emma, I think we confused her a lot, but. But it was very exciting and we're really proud of her work. And then we have Abby. And we had, do we have Abby, where are you, Abby, okay, and I was like, I knew your hair, sorry, you're lucky. So Abby, again, was actually another one of our, our early, early wins. And she, we highlighted her before we even knew we were gonna have this fully fleshed-out program because what she did was just so cool. So, her and another student, and we also recognize that student, so we'll probably say this again. That hurt another student when we had our open house in the fall. We also had a CTE, CTE, C Team Football game happen simultaneously. And Martin Wildrip, our athletic trainer, is also one of our teachers, and so as he, she was coming to class and Martin got a call that there was emergency out on the football field, and so Martin's like, I gotta go, and he runs out and goes and deals with the injured student, as he should. Her and another student just took over. Her and another student just took over parent conferences and just started talking to the parents, explaining what happens at class, dealt with everything, handled the problem like pros, didn't blink, didn't bat an eye. So we were really, really proud and excited to hear about that and wanted to recognize them. Oh, and she, you actually were on the field, right? I said that wrong. She was on the field and another student was in the class. So, and not only did she call Martin, she also called 911, diagnosed the problem and dealt with the student injury by herself. So pretty proud of her and her skills. So thank you. Okay. Yes, this is the right, I got them backwards. So Eden, and is Eden here? Okay, Eden, there you are. Eden was the one in the classroom. So I just talked about her and I didn't know. But Eden was the one in the classroom who did the, while Abby was out on the field, Eden was indoors handling the parents. And Martin was like, but I don't even have anything to do because they did it all, even though both worlds were working all at once. So both of them just took ownership, behaved in the way that we want our future leaders and people moving into careers to do, probably handled themselves way better than I would have as a high school student. And their maturity, their skills and their reflection on this was just absolutely impressive. So we want to thank you both. And then Tomas. Tomas is not here. Okay, Tomas is one of our, probably because he's at, at school working on a robot, I would guess. Because being the mom of a robotics, a former robotics student myself, I can tell you those kids work late hours to get those robots going and they are impressive. So he has come into, he's part of our MHS robotics program. And he has come into this year with little to no experience and then has just like jumped. And he is a huge advocate. He is positive and keeps things going. And then he not only has he jumped himself, he's bringing other kids along. And then now he's going back and helping kids that are struggling with some very high level, high level work. And so it's, it's pretty impressive. The teacher Brad Byer, who is also employee of the month, just for the record. We're pretty proud of that one. Brad, sometimes when I talk with Brad and I love Brad and I've worked in CTE my entire career. My mom was a CTE teacher, like this is my life. He talks and I don't understand and I'm married to a tech guy, so it's not that either. So he talks, I'm just like, I don't, I don't actually know what that is. So for him to say that Tomas is looking at high levels, that means something to me. It's, it's pretty significant. So very, very excited and proud of Tomas as well. In our engineering two program, which is a new class this year, we have a new teacher, Ryan Martin, who is teaching the class and he nominated Jack Farmer. So Jack, here you are, welcome. Thank you. Jack is known for having a positive attitude and strong work ethic. He, Mr. Martin talks about how he spent, like he just doesn't stop. He just keeps going until he gets it right. So, and engineering is not an easy concept. So, and again, he's another student who is encouraging and pulling other students that are struggling along with him and helping to go above and beyond. So thank you, Jack. And then in our cell biotech and forensics program at the high school as well, we have Sophia. So Sophia is known, so this we probably hate because Sophia is known as being a quiet leader. So you love to call out people who are quiet layers. She comes in for extra help, asks questions and just really, really wants to understand and get the material right. And then she automatically jumps in and helps around the class and does what is asked without even being asked. And anybody who looks like they're struggling, she just goes and helps. She knows, she reads the room and responds. So she's also known, and I've observed this myself, for being very compassionate and kind. So thank you, Sophia. And we also have Micah. Is Micah here? Okay. So Micah is, I still want to celebrate him. Micah is a digital student at Guinness Hidden River. We only have Digitals at Hidden River. So when we're bouncing between the schools, that's why it seems like there's a lot of Hidden River, just for the record. But Micah is a role model for peers. Again, you're going to see that they, when you read through these, like there's always exceptional collaboration and that they go above and beyond extra. They're taking care of others. He's known for also having a growth mindset, being responsive to coaching and then has a high standard of personal integrity. So yay, Micah. So you know, I could celebrate kids all night because this is totally my jam. But I, I, I know that it's late and people do have lives, so I will stop. But with that, you know, I, I just want to say thank you to all of you as well as our community and our families for all of the support that we get for our program. We couldn't do it without that and I, I'm fully aware of that. So it's for, it's for all of that, that we are, are more than willing to go the extra mile ourselves. And I just want to, I thank you from our whole department. It means a lot. And.
Shannon, thank you so much. And I don't think that you even mentioned the number. I'm looking on the paperwork that you gave me a ton of. There it is, here we go. Total CTE enhanced funding per grant status as of December 2022 is $3.4 million and change. In a time when we're like, huh, where's the funding going to come for things? And you guys go out, you leave the cave, you kill the thing and you drag it back. And I appreciate you guys going out and your team doing that. And the students, you guys have a good night, get out of here, don't be bored and stay in this room. Appreciate you guys. But just loving that you bring kids in here and, and, and celebrating the heck out of them. Because the end of the day, this is what we're doing. So thank you for that. Thank you for working so hard and to your team for working so hard. You guys are awesome. And so I just really appreciate you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if, if people don't know, Shannon is a Bearcat. Like you are a true Bearcat, Bearcat alum. We talk about it all the time because we're like, it's a great day to be a Bearcat, isn't it?
Absolutely, orange and black, just for you.
The energy right here, I like it. But thank you so much for everything you do, Shannon. You're just, you are amazing. It always, I'm, I'm always so happy when I get to visit the high school and I get to tour with you. And you know these students and you know them so well. And I, I think that that takes so much care and love and, and support. And that's really important when taking on some of these bigger, bigger things. So thank you for all that you do as well. And thank you for your team. It means a lot. I have sons who are, who love also Digitals, right? And so, so it's exciting to know that, you know, I can hand them over to you and, and you're just going to love and support them and all of our students. So thank you for all that you do and thank you for building such an amazing team that also loves and supports our students.
Thank you. I was just getting all flustered.
Come on, let's give Shannon a hand. Okay, come on.
Thank you.
On that note, guys, can we just like do a motion for a quick like five minute recess? Go to the restroom a quick.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion to use a body break. Second.
There is a motion and a second for a.
Body break, it's in the minutes.
Body break. We'll go ahead and return at 6:45 PM.
I'll make sure that's minutes.
Oh, all in favor? 40, we'll be back at 6:45 PM. It is 6:46 PM and we are back from our break. Moving on to agenda item 4.02. And we have Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt here to present.
I just appreciate that our CFO has a fan club.
That's my committee. So this evening, I don't really have a presentation, but on board docs for the last meeting and this meeting, the budget parameters for 2324 were posted. Last meeting, we did not have an opportunity to discuss them and for me to ask whether or not you had any questions or concerns regarding this document. But essentially this document will provide parameters as we move forward and develop our budget. It is intended to represent what the board wants to see from the budget in 2324. And so I wanted to ensure that over the past couple of weeks that each of you had time to read the document and had time to determine whether or not it correctly reflects what our goals and objectives are for next year. And if not, to be able to share your opinions and your thoughts and possibly amendments to this document moving forward. And again, this outlines what our priorities are and what our parameters are moving forward into our 2324 budget. And so with that, are there any questions, comments, concerns?
You Brenda, always.
Thank you.
I love to talk numbers. That's why we're friends. Couple of things that I just wanted to point out, and I think that it just has to do with the, the priorities that we have with the district. In the, the budget will check marks, one, two, three, fourth from the bottom. It says consider reserve, so the budget will consider reserve balances at the fund level and set appropriations to ensure positive reserves. And then the second from the bottom, it says ensure long-term financial impacts are considered when adding, modifying or eliminating district programs, any of the changes that we have. I think one of the things that I want to make sure that is prioritized in these ones, which I'm not categorizing priority of any of these, they're all very important. I think probably go through a process to do that. But some of these really stood out to me because there is a, not an underlying fear, but a heightened awareness of what other districts are going through when it comes to financial management. And they've depended very much on one-time dollars, like the SIR funds and things like that. I want to make sure that when we're doing that kind of planning, that we're not putting ourselves into a dangerous situation financially, where we're looking at ongoing payment processes, but we're using one-time dollars. And so we have funding sources when we're looking at long-term financial planning. We're saying, okay, we're going to fund this, but we're funding this with something that is an ongoing grant or funding this with ongoing federal funds or state funds to make sure these curriculum things happen. These positions, these salaries happen, because it's not just the position for the students. This is the livelihood of the staff and the families in our community. And so we're a huge employer. And so not just the fact of what it does for our students, but what this does for our families, that we're not doing things and we're doing them halfway where our program falls off the edge because we didn't plan in advance and we're using those one-time dollars. And so those are, those are heightened priorities because again, as we've talked with other districts in the, in the area and heard from them, this is the dangerous and frustrating situation that they find themselves, even districts in our region, in Snohomish County. I appreciate you've done a lot of work. That's not necessarily the case so much for us. There's a few places where that's happened. But as we look at the next school year, these are things that are at the top of my priority list to make sure that that longevity, one, the student success is at the priority, that we're able to have, continue the programs that we need. But then it also affects the families as well. So those are the things that I really want to, that's for me, you guys, that's something that's a high priority.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to continue to take a look at this. I know that we were just at the legislative workshop and we talked about the transportation, well, the hot topics for that WASO, WASDA and WASBO are putting together and are supporting. So a lot of it is around transportation and special education. And I, Victor was actually with us. So I leaned over and I said, hey, how much would that actually cover for our school district? And he was able to look up the transportation fund. And I know that after working with the Budget Advisory Committee last year, what that looks like for our special education. But have we started looking at what that may, how that may impact our budget if some of those bills are passed?
Yes, we have, because right now we spend roughly $3 million of non-special education money on special education. We spend roughly four to 500,000 of non-transportation money on transportation. If they fix some of the gaps, for example, if we were fully funded for the high cost students in transportation, that would provide roughly four to $500,000, four to $500,000 towards meeting our basic ed budget. So that gives us back additional money to continue doing what we're doing or to add more programs. Special education, they haven't quite settled on what their main target is. And when we attended large district roundtable, they were talking about, and this was directly from OSBI, moving if we're, if we're spending more in special education. One of the proposals is actually just take that money from our basic ed budget and relabel it as special education. So if that happens, it's not additional resources. It's just making us short over here rather than over here. There has been talk at legislation about increasing the percentage from 13% to 15% because of the demographics of our students. Part of our issue in the past was having Everett Community College and Shoreline Community College mixed in with our student population. And so we weren't even making it to the 13%. We were sitting more around the 11, 12%. So raising that lid under that situation wouldn't benefit us. Right now, our total, our total percentage, it might make it over 13%, but we won't ever reach that 15% unless the demographics in our community change. Does that make sense? So raising that percentile won't impact us that much. However, changing some of the other rules may. And so we're just watching the legislation to see what they're landing on and what the front runner plan is before we start diving in deep to discover, to determine impacts.
Thank you, Brenda.
Follow up with that, that's a great question, Jen. Thank you for asking that, because that made me also wonder if state legislation does increase funding for higher cost students. And that frees up 400 to 500 grand that we're spending of non, non-special education funds to help fund special education. Are those unrestricted funds that we could put anywhere else we need? So curriculum, transportation, whatever that is. Okay.
Right, right now, what we're focusing on, if you remember at our last meeting, I'm sure you do, that we're projecting roughly apples to apples, no changes, the assumptions that we had regarding IPD. We were looking at approximately $3.67 million. That will just reduce that 3.6 to 3.1 or three. And so whatever legislation does to add additional revenue will reduce the reductions that we have to make or the differences in how we're spending money, the reassigning that makes the decision process easier.
Well, Brenda, you just need to go talk to Shannon. She just presented, she has $3.4 million she just raised. She can go find you some money.
Well, that's, that's, that's basically at a portion.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that, that really helps us. And so if you can just continue to keep us updated though, as legislation moves forward. And I know it's like this every single year, the closer we get, the more we can zero in on things. But that, I think helps us was, and especially with the committee, the budget committee to help with narrowing in on what we're going to be able to do and we're going to be able to land that for, that is really helpful. Because those decisions that they make, they may have all the ripple effects for us.
Yeah, I think that by March 13th, our next meeting, that the Senate budget will be out.
Okay.
So we will be able to evaluate the impacts on the budget based on that budget and then follow with the House and then finally the conference. So we can start looking at real impacts within the next few weeks.
My main concern is what's happening in other school districts. And so I'm kind of fearful of things happening at our school district. I know we're in a pretty good position. We don't have a threat of schools being shut down or a $25 million shortfall, I think in Everett. So the items that you've identified really are pretty comprehensive. So as we go on, I know you can't give us concrete, concrete numbers and it depends on the legislation. And the legislation goes on and is revised and whether it's the House or the Senate bill. So we'll wait for future reports and we'll all be positive. Thank you for the work and the budget committee.
You guys also have to recognize that we're in a better position than a lot of our counterparts because of decisions that you have made along the way and the support that you have. and the support that you've provided along the way. Because our whole goal, and I've said this before, was to keep us away from the Esser cliff that we knew was coming. And so we've done a great job as a district, and this is just the final step next year.
Hey, we're only able to do that because you have a great team and a good committee and giving us great information to be able to make those decisions. But appreciate you have staff input in here to as well with the processes. That's an important piece because they're going to be able to find where the right cuts need to be made if we have to do any cuts that are not going to be, where we can trim fat where there is fat. And that's because we don't want to, we don't want to make cuts in areas that are going to impact staffing and student performance where they don't need to happen. So I appreciate that you have that in your committee.
Awesome. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent consent agenda. Agenda item 5.06, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors, I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated February 27, 2023.
Second.
There's the second. There's a motion and a second. There that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated February 27, 2023 discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 6.03. Is there a motion?
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead. I just, I moved the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated February 27, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second, in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as, all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated February 27, 2023 discussion. All in favor? The agenda item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 7.01, board reports and/or comments. Anyone? Director Campbell?
Sure, why not? Couple of things. One, as Nathan pointed out as well, all you eighth grade families out there at Park Place and Hidden River, make sure you're out at the high school on Wednesday night for the future Bearcat night as well. I will be out there and got to give my son a little heads up. Saw Brett Willie last night at the Black Student Union's movie night at Galaxy Theaters. Got to the last two weeks in a row, heavy movies. Oh my goodness, but really important. My kids saw them. I think for them, it was really important. Not growing up in the United States, that they didn't understand a lot of the context of what our country's scars are and to understand that process. And I think that was really good. I'm really thankful for Galaxy for putting on, for Macphir, for helping put that on for Black Student Union, for, at the high school, for doing all the work to put that on because it was really powerful and really good stuff. And I think that it really moved a lot of hearts in a really positive, powerful way. So I was very excited to go participate and, and take my family to that. So it was good.
I'll go next. You can add loving to your list out on Netflix. That's another one of those incredibly powerful movies that you need to watch. So I am going to talk more about students in this. I know that we got the email. I hope all of you read it. But just talking about our student athletes and their achievements in the classroom because as Ashley so beautifully points out, they are students first. So congratulations to our winter sports teams who've earned the outstanding team award, which is a GPA of 3.5 to 4.0. We have girls varsity basketball at 3.75. We have dance at 3.65, boys JV basketball at 3.6, gymnastics at 3.5 and girls C-team basketball at 3.54. Super outstanding job. I know what it's like to be a student athlete and to also continue to achieve in the classroom and it's, it's important. I mean, we have one as a student representative. So. And then we also have the distinguished team award. And this is for a GPA of 3.0 to 3.49. And we have boys C-team basketball at 3.38, girls JV basketball at 3.35, boys varsity basketball at 3.32 and competitive cheer at 3.13. It's an honor to be able to recognize these teams and these students and their hard work, both on and off the court. Also, we have a coach that just got Coach of the Year for Boys Basketball in 3A West Coast. So just wanted to give another shout out to Justin Crone. I believe that's how you pronounce his last name. Am I correct? I, I, I think so. I apologize if I got it wrong. I always try to get names right. But what, what an honor to be able to say that we have this coach here in the Monroe School District and to be able to honor him for all of the work that he's done for our students and that he continues to do. So Justin, we appreciate you so very much. And we're thankful that you're here and part of the Bearcat team. Also, kindergarten info night is coming up, March 7th. That's next week. It's 5:30 to 6:30 for all incoming kindergarteners at the elementary schools, except for Frank Wagner. At Frank Wagner, it is from 6 to 7 PM. So just make sure that you double check and that you know your time so that you're there at the correct time when you need to be there. Super excited. I know last year we got to go into the schools and see a lot of these kids and their families. And it was a total bucket filler. Everyone was really excited, especially because it was back in person too. So, and then just to comment, so went down to the Wassa, Wasda, Wasbo Legislative Conference this weekend. And it was actually, it's actually really good. We got sent home with some big books filled with tons of good stuff. We got to listen to some amazing speakers. We got updates on the two hot topics, which of course are special education and transportation. The bills currently have been amended. So as of Sunday, Sunday, that's when we're there, Sunday. They've dramatically reduced cost as far as special education funding of what we would ideally like to see. Right now, the Senate bill is sitting at about 300 million. But as one of the moderators pointed out, that's split out over four years. Like you take anything, any sort of funding and you divide it by four years. So really, it's, it's not much, you know, when you look at it from that, from that point. And then also the House bill, the funds are sitting at 150 million. So that really will take whatever we can get, but it's not ideally what it is that we want to see. There was also talk of, you know, special education being looked at now as a civil rights issue because our job as a district is to make sure that all of our children are receiving the best possible education that we can provide to them. And when we're not, we're not meeting that expectation because we don't have the funds that are there, but we need the funds to do it, it's, it's a big issue, you know? That's, that is what we are charged with and we need all school districts, I believe, can always do better. There's always room for learning growth and improvement. So definitely going to be watching these and getting updates on these as well. I look forward to hearing what Brenda has to say. The transportation funding. So initially, that was trying to look at funding transportation as a whole. So to take the entire budget for every school district and fund transportation. But obviously, as happens with bills, they get cut. So now it's, right now, as it sits, it's just for safety net program and special interest passengers. Obviously, it's not ideally what we want, but we'll take whatever it is that we can get. But as this continues to morph and move through the legislative process, I'll try to keep you as informed as I can on those ones. So ideally, I think they say there's about five bills or so that seem to pass through out of the menagerie that come through. So I'm trying to look and pinpoint and figure out which ones those are. Obviously, these are two of them. And then the school meals was also another really big one that was talked about. Trying to get funding for all school meals, which ideally, we're not going, ideally, we want funding for all of it, but are we realistically going to get that? Probably not. And I think the numbers that they were throwing out were about 60 to 70%. If we can get funding for 60 to 70%, that's absolutely better than nothing. Obviously, it's not the ideal, what we want to see, but we'll take it, right? So looking at that one as well. So yeah, I think that's all I've got for you this week.
You know, I've, I've spoken in front of hundreds of people before and I've participated in events. But coming up here, the meeting like this, the last meeting, my heart really gets racing. And when comments are made, it's hard not to show your emotions. So when Robin had spoke, gave her feedback, it was more kind of a visceral, visceral response. So anyway, I apologize to Robin, the MEA, and to the teachers. There was no way that I intended to disrespect. It's pretty interesting sitting up here and getting all kinds of feedback. A couple of the miscellaneous things. And this is only for the board, because I can't talk to them all at once. My father had his 93rd birthday. He's doing well, the oldest living school board member. It's not as doing as well as I would like. He has advanced Parkinson's. Something else I did first of the week was actually testified in front of the Senate Transportation Committee. And that was interesting. We were given 90 seconds to gather our thoughts and every individual had 90 seconds to respond, excuse me, to present their information. So that was a good experience to sit on that side of the, of the audience and look at the board. There was about 20 people, part of the Transportation Committee. Also, I'd like to say that I really enjoyed the jazz band out front. You know, when, we always look at adults out here and looking at those kids and like when those, several weeks ago, when those, I don't know, for third or fourth graders that came in and said, that just filled my heart. So listening to the band, the jazz band, very talented group of individuals, really enjoyed that. And you know, behind it, there was, there was art. And it reminded me of Monet paintings, just the variety of colors and, you know, of various shapes. So that was really nice. I really enjoyed that.
Thank you, Chuck. To add to some of what Director Barnes was saying, so we learned about the hot topics. So they're looking to fully fund special education and then also fully fund transportation. That's like big wish list items. What else? I think you've covered most of it, Molly. One of the students who spoke, we had lots of students at this event, by the way, a lot of students there. I actually brought Ms. Jada Rose over here and she was the youngest student there and was taking notes on her iPad. I will gladly share those with all of you because Jada took great notes. Good job, Mama. And he said, "Policy and programs can't happen if students aren't in the building." And I thought that was really powerful. I'm hoping that we can continue to advocate for transportation, for having that fully funded for our schools as well as special education. And then speaking of Wasda, we probably do need to just somehow, keeping a sign or appoint one of us as the Wasda Legislative Rep. So we'll go ahead. I'll look at our policies and see what that looks like or see what that means moving forward. And I just, one, I really thank our community for coming out, for showing up and for advocating for their students. I think one thing that is super clear to me always in this position is that our students are well-loved. They, they are supported and they are loved and they are cared for. And that's how we keep having people show up and advocate on their behalf. And I am really appreciative that we have that sort of community. Board meetings are never boring. Really grateful for that. And then what I heard students say over and over again at these meetings is that students are experts at being students. So one thing that I am really mindful of is listening or getting more student voice in a lot of what we do because we hear a lot from our adults in the community. And again, super thankful for that, but I'd love to hear more from students. They're brilliant. I've been able to sit in some of the meetings or some of the groups up at the high school. I kind of tried to blend in and then realized that I'm almost 40 and so I should need to stop. But it's really neat just to hang out with students. It's a bucket filler always. And just looking forward to continuing to partner with our community members and our leaders and our students and our building leaders and our district leaders and our staff. And I spoke with someone today and I said, Monroe just has like potential, right? We have this, this amazing potential. My family has been here for over 20 years and it makes me super excited to know that we have a business here. My children go to school here and all of the students and friends that were growing up and I get to see how some of these programs that we talk about in our board meetings are helping them and supporting them. And some of the kids today, I actually have known since they were probably five. And to see how CTE has spoken to them and how they are staying in school and thriving is very, very exciting. And it's, I needed to see that today too. And it's not my fingers to that jazz band. So there are no other questions or comments. It is 7:13 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.